So. All right, good evening, everyone. The time is seven oh two. Welcome to the Board of Trustees' monthly meeting for January fifteenth, twenty twenty five. I might call this meeting to order. And Elizabeth, would you take the roll call, please?
Absolutely. Mayor Citron?
Present.
Deputy Mayor Lindsay?
Present.
Trustee Brooke?
Present.
Trustee Sarah?
Uh, he's there.
You can see him. I guess he's muted.
Yeah, he's here. Yeah, I'll note for the record.
And I'm sorry, I'm here and I was just saying, and I just got a text from Jed saying I keep getting an error for the Zoom. Um, so I'll just tell him, I'll let him know that I'm in and maybe suggest that he tries.
Is he in the country?
He is, yeah.
Okay.
All right.
Oh, there he is.
There he is right now. I didn't see him before. All right, he's in.
Okay, got it.
Okay, great. Thank you.
And trustee Turner and trustees Sarah and Turner are here via Zoom. Thank you.
All right, good evening, everyone. Before we begin the regular meeting, we have a scheduled public hearing. And I call this meeting to order. And with respect to the public hearing, I have an obligation to read the notice.
Are we gonna do the pledge first? I'm sorry to interrupt.
I have the pledge as part of the regular meeting.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Okay, it's, I mean, it's, it's, it's your agenda. You prepared it.
I know.
Okay. Notice is hereby given that a public hearing will be held by the Village Board of the Village of Tuxedo Park, Orange County, New York, on January fifteenth, twenty twenty five, at seven P M. or as soon thereafter as can be heard, at the Village of Tuxedo Park, Village Hall, eighty Laurel I Road, Tuxedo Park, New York, one zero nine eight seven, to consider the adoption of a local law about a village-wide speed limit. Said local law was made available for review at the Village Clerk's Office, eighty Laurel Lord Road, Tuxedo Park, and could have been examined any time after December thirtieth, twenty twenty four, by any interested party from nine A M. to four P M. Monday through Friday. So I move that be it resolved that we open the public hearing on introductory law number one of twenty twenty five, which is essentially a reduction of the speed limit village-wide from the present thirty miles an hour to twenty-five miles an hour. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by the deputy mayor. All in favor of opening the public hearing, please say aye.
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 All right, okay. It's unanimous to open the public hearing. So ladies and gentlemen, the public hearing is designed to allow members of the public to address the issue, which is pretty specific here. It's, it's, it's rather simple. We proposed sometime, I proposed some time ago, and the board agreed that we would submit it to the public to speak on the issue of reducing the village's speed limit from thirty to twenty-five miles an hour. Under New York state law, the village is permitted to do that. There was an amendment to the vehicle and traffic law in twenty twenty-two on condition that a traffic safety study be conducted with a recommendation from a licensed traffic engineer, that it is in the best interest of the community to reduce the speed limit to twenty-five miles an hour. And that traffic safety study was completed in September or October. It was published. It was attached to this meeting as, as an attachment to the agenda and was available for anybody to read. So I now open the floor to any members of the public, starting here in the room. Are there any members of the public who wish to comment on the proposed reduction of the village-wide speed limit from thirty to twenty-five miles an hour? Okay, how about online? Anybody online wish to comment and give their opinion on reducing the speed limit from thirty to twenty-five miles an hour village-wide? Please raise your hand.
Alan Barnett, I believe raised his hand.
Alan, did you raise your hand? I don't see it on the screen.
Okay, it's hidden by.
I did, yes.
Oh, okay. The floor is yours, Alan.
Yes, thank you very much. I'm opposed to this because I think it's kind of counterproductive. And I guess my basic question, if we're interested in, in increasing, decreasing, forcing speed limits, we're gonna do two things. One, enforce them, because they don't get enforced right now. But two, there's a quirk in the way we handle things and when they go to, when those people who do get tickets go to court. I haven't been to court recently, but the last time I was there, the practice was still that if you were brought in and with a charge for speeding, you were offered a non-speeding ticket. And the reason you were doing, doing this was that if you were fined on a speeding ticket, for some peculiar reason, the town got the majority of the fine, whereas if you were fined for a non-speeding ticket, the park got the majority of the fine. So it was more economical to encourage people to plead for a non, non-moving violation. Well, if you went back and just, and prosecute people for the violation, that's gonna get you, that's gonna increase the fine, but it's also going to go against the person's record. Because, because it does not go against the person's record if they have a non-moving violation. But if they're, if they are found guilty of a moving violation, that goes against the record, it's a penalty, and would be particularly burdensome and risky for the drivers of the variety of trucks that come in and out of the park, who just from my own sense of observation, are the ones that are doing most of the speeding. But if you really want to, if you, if your aim is to um, get people to drive, get people to drive at slower speed, just change your practice in the court.
Okay, if I, if I could just respond to you, Alan. First of all, the purpose, the primary purpose of, of reducing the speed limit is not to increase revenue. The primary purpose is to increase traffic safety. I, I had the privilege of serving as a village justice in the Village of Montebello in Rockland County, so I can give you some insight into the, the plea agreements that are made in court. First of all, you are correct to an extent. If the, if the person pleads guilty to a speeding offense, a portion of that does not go to the town. It actually goes to the state of New York. And a balance is returned to the village. While if a person pleads to a non-moving offense and satisfaction of the, of the violation of speeding, the entire amount does, does go to the village. But it is really up to the judge, who is an independent and elected official in the village, to make the determination whether such a plea is acceptable. And I'm loathe to, to comment or direct or tell the judge what he's doing in terms of accepting these pleas is inappropriate. It is just not my place or the place of the board. The judiciary of the village is independent of the village board. The judiciary of the village accounts to us with respect to the fines collected. That's the obligation under the rules of the Office of Court Administration. But I'm not in a position to order the village judge not to accept the offers that are made in the course of a prosecution of a moving violation.
No. But it's, it is up to the park. We don't have to make it, we don't have to offer that to the, to the, to the defendant, to the builder. We don't have to offer it. And the judge can decide whether or not he wants to take it or not. But we don't, if we don't offer it, he's not gonna take it.
I, I will, I will leave that, I will leave that to the court personnel. We, I appreciate, I appreciate the points you're making. But as I said in my initial response to what you, what you, to your comments, and I will read it once the, the actual resolution is put before the board, the reasons why reducing the speed limit is a good thing. So we can agree to disagree on that particular point.
My, Alan, you started your.
What's that?
Trustee Sarah.
I'm asking, I'm asking you a question, Alan. You, you started, can you hear me? Okay.
Yes.
Okay, so you started by saying that you thought that reducing the speed limit was unproductive. And unless the unproductive piece was tied to what you then went on to say, I didn't, I don't know that I heard the rationale for why you thought reducing the speed limit was unproductive.
Because I think if you, if you really want to reduce the speed, just make it, don't, don't seek, and I disagree with what Mark's saying, don't seek a settlement, to seek a settle. We won't, we won't a speeding violation.
I, I understand. Okay, so you did answer the question. I, I will say you also made the assertion, which I disagree with, that the, the issue we have is primarily with, you know, the trucks coming into the park. I think I've mentioned this several times before. Most people on this phone probably see me out there running. I run on these roads on a regular basis. The speedsters are not the trucks. We have lots of people in our village going way too fast, dangerously fast, and unnecessarily fast from my perspective.
Anyone else?
I'd like to make, I'd like to make a comment. We get police reports every month, thanks to the chief. That shows there are tickets and warnings granted. The original discussion about speed limits was based on the fact that there are small roads in the park, which cannot tolerate thirty miles per hour, and cannot tolerate it twenty-five mile hours per hour. There are small, curvy roads that force you to calm down. My belief is we don't really have a problem. You know, Josh says we do. I personally don't think there's a problem. I don't see a purpose in providing extra rules that provide administrative burden on the police and, and become potentially harassment to the members of the village. So I would suggest we not do this, because I think it's quite unproductive, and I'm more concerned about efficiency and, and cleanly dealing with issues. We got a thirty mile speed limit, we enforce it, we're good to go. And there are lots of small roads that require a much lower limit. I don't believe you create village limits based on small roads.
Let, let me just stop you by saying, this is, this is the public hearing portion of this consideration. And it is, we have to pass this in, we, we have to vote on this later on in the session. And that is the time for the trustees to discuss their opinions with regard to this proposed legislation. And I'd like to give the public, and Mr. Barnett is a member of the public, the opportunity to speak and give their opinion. And if there's no one else who is a member of the public who wishes to speak on this, then we close the public hearing. And later on in the agenda, we will make, I will make the resolution to, to pass the amendment to the law. And then, of course, the trustees can discuss among themselves their opinions and, and indicate ultimately how they're gonna vote on this particular proposed local law. So is there anybody else on Zoom who wishes to speak at the public hearing? On this issue? Yes, Ms. Mershon. Have you unmuted, Dolores?
I can ask her to unmute, which I just did.
Oh, dear.
Yes, I think I'm unmuted now.
Okay.
Yes. Hi, we live at thirty-six West Lake Road, which is at the bottom of the hill coming from the school. And we've complained for years and years that people are flying by our house at fifty miles an hour at least. And I've even followed them when I'm pulling out, just to see how fast they're going. And they're going fifty miles an hour. So and, and I'm, it's not trucks, it's residents, it's people driving to the school, especially three times a day. And it's dangerous. I walk every day with my two dogs, and it's scary sometimes. So I, I'm totally in favor of this, but also, also enforcing it.
Thank you, Dolores. We have someone with a hand raised who has the initials C S. Would you identify yourself, sir or ma'am?
Hi, it's Elizabeth Cottner. I live on Weewaw Road. Sorry, I'm on a unfamiliar phone. But I just wanted to say that we live on Weewaw Road, and in general, the roads in the park are very narrow. They're populated by people and bicycles and animals. And generally, if cars are going beyond thirty, that all feels too fast. But we think it could be slowed down and be much safer. Sometimes I'm coming down a hill, and I feel like I'm going too fast. I like, I look at my speedometer, and I'm doing eighteen. So you really have to take into account the width of the roads and what's going on around you. So we're for the lowering of the speed limit. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cottner. Let's, let's go to the last person, and then, Chris, you get, you get a chance. We have Richard. Would you just give us your last name, Richard, please, before you speak?
There's also a Kim on my screen.
Yeah, we'll, we'll get to that.
Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll get, we'll get to everyone whose hand is up.
Thank you. And Richard's unmuted now.
Yes, thank you. Richard Zina, three Tacoma. Appreciate the village hosting this public hearing. Would like to express support for the proposed reduction in the speed limit in the interest of public safety, especially pedestrian safety, for a village that does not have sidewalks, which is especially meaningful, I think, for children, families, pets, and the like, that take advantage of the roads. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zina. Now we have, it was Kim, I think. If you could just give us your last name, please.
Hi, yes, Kim Kilgore.
Thank you.
Hi, I definitely support the reduction. I agree with Josh, Dolores, and whoever else said, you know, walking, you know, I, when I'm driving in the car, often I will come up on someone who's running or on a bike. I generally go under the speed limit because going around a curve, you never know what's there. We're on twelve Circuit Road, and up on Circuit Road, there are areas where there are curves, and the, the road is really built just for one car width. And so having two cars going at each other at thirty miles an hour is a, is a dangerous scenario. So we support this.
Thank you very much, Ms. Kilgore. Brad Ewing, if you could unmute him, please.
Hi, this is May and Brad, May Shore. We're on forty Camp Comfort Road. And we're just calling in to say that we also support the reduction of the speed.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Appreciate it, May. And Brad, if you're on the phone with her. Ms. Maxwell, your hand is up. You're next.
Hi, this is Lindsay Maxwell. I'm at eighty-six Summit Road. We are literally on the summit in Tuxedo Park. And there have been numerous times when I come head to head with a delivery truck or a village resident, and there is sort of no railing on, on T O, which is one of the roads to get up to our house. And we have small children. So I fully support the reduction of the speed limit.
Thank you, Ms. Maxwell. Chi Yan Hempel.
Yes, May, thank you. I am also very supportive of this initiative, for all the reasons stated. And I think people will benefit from, you know, thriving more slowly and admiring the beautiful scenery around them. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Hempel. Anybody else on Zoom wish to comment on the proposed reduction in the speed limit? Seeing no one else, Chris, I think you raised your hand?
Christopher Gao, one eight two West Lake Road. On five occasions, I've been driving on, in front of my house on West Lake Road, where there is a blind curve, and a vehicle has come on the other side, on the narrow road, taking over part of my side of the road. Five times, I've almost gone into the lake. So it's of great consent to me that that the, the velocity is reduced to twenty-five miles per hour for that safety.
Thank you. Last chance. Anyone else from the public wish to comment on this? Seeing no other hands raised either here or on Zoom, I make a motion to be resolved that we close the public hearing, hearing on introductory law, local number one of twenty twenty-five, reduction of the speed limit, village speed limit from thirty to twenty-five miles an hour. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Trustee Brooke?
Yeah.
All right, unanimous, five zero to close the public hearing. Okay.
Please let the lights off. Mercedes car outside.
All right, anybody in here have a Mercedes with the lights that perhaps should be turned off? No? Okay. All right. Now, if everyone would please stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. All right, my first comment is actually a reminder that the village office will be closed next Monday, January fifteenth, for Martin Luther King Day. Garbage collection will not be affected by the holiday, i.e. if we picked up the schedule. We'll send out a general village-wide notice as well. Denise will send it out later on this week. So I, with respect to my comments, I have one to make. I know many of you are here to discuss and hear about the Verizon cell tower. I want to tell you that on Friday afternoon, pretty late in the day, I had a conversation with both Mr. Sarchi, who's been representing Verizon, as well as a project manager from Verizon. And they requested an additional month before making their final presentation to the village residents. And as time is not of the essence with respect to this plan, I, I granted their request. So they will appear in person, making their final presentation on February nineteenth, and will be available to answer any old questions. I left the, the item involving the cell tower on the agenda, because beyond Verizon's presentation, it's going to be up to the board to determine how we proceed, once they've completed their final presentation. And as I see it, there are two possible, two possible roads. One is for, after obviously everyone's had a chance to speak publicly, for the board to take a vote. And the Board of Trustees will decide by a majority whether we proceed with our discussions with Verizon, or whether we cease discussing and close this matter and end this particular proposal. The alternative, because we do live in a democracy, and this is obviously an issue of immense concern to everyone in the village, we can go forward with a referendum. I'm making this proposal today, even though we're not really gonna discuss it in detail, because I want to give everybody who has an interest in this to think about what they would prefer. At some point, we have to have a resolution, and either the resolution is through the board or through a vote by the residents of the village. Now, if the residents of the village, the board chooses to proceed with a referendum, and the residents vote no, by a majority, that's the end of the discussion. On the other hand, if we do choose to proceed with a referendum, and a majority of the residents vote yes, that doesn't necessarily mean that the cell tower will be built. But it will essentially authorize the board to continue discussions, public discussions with Verizon about this particular project. So I'm giving everyone essentially a month to mull over, in their own minds, based on their experiences, what they would prefer. So that when we come back on February nineteenth, after the Verizon makes its presentation, we can have a full and complete discussion about how we proceed on this matter, whether it be a board vote, up or down, or whether it be something that we put to the residents as a referendum. In terms of the referendum, I've spoken to the Board of Elections, and they have said that they will not, even though they, they conduct our elections in June, they will not run the referendum. So we will have to discuss how, if we decide to go forward with it, how the village will handle it, whether it be through a third party. You know, there are proxy battles in corporate world where third-party independent agencies actually conduct the vote, or whether it's done through Village Hall. Those are all discussions we can have in February, before the board makes a decision as to how to proceed, and gives everybody an opportunity to voice their opinion about it. So with that being said, I've completed my, I've completed my remarks, and I'll turn to the deputy mayor. Is there anything you would like to discuss?
And I think I'll just wait for a review of the capital projects plan.
Trustee Brooke, any comments?
Yeah, there are a few pieces I saw, one of which was a questionnaire. A number of people called me about it. And I went through the questionnaire, and it really doesn't, is not really very substantive with respect to what we have to deal with. Issues such as the risk of a tower falling on the water tower seem to me to be highly academic, and I don't know of any history of that.
I'm sorry, could you just let us know what questionnaire you're talking about? Because I certainly didn't receive any.
There was a petition that went around, and it's been referenced to having two hundred people sign it.
Right.
And if you look at that petition, it says, you know, the, one of the risks is a, is that cell tower falls.
Yeah, we're familiar with the petition.
Right. So, so, you know, I think when I look at that as an issue, I think the risk of absence of coverage is greater than the risk of a cell fall, falling on a water tower. What was remarkably absent from that was a discussion of alternative technology, leaving it to the trustees to come up with alternative technology. And it made three requests, one of which is a moratorium on the stuff. I don't think we need a moratorium. That's my personal opinion. But I think you've developed a solution to address it at the next weekend, next meeting. You know, I think the issue is, as a community, we tend to throw a lot of obstacles up to any change, causing delays. And I believe it's a responsibility of trustees to make that decision. I support your promise, your, your suggestion. The one email that came in, I thought was very productive, from Chin Yu Hempel, where they actually talked about different technology that may or may not be available in a timeframe we're talking about. From my perspective, I would like that letter forwarded to Verizon, and they can address the technology issues in their presentation, so that they, they can talk about timeframes and issues. You know, from my perspective, I think the communication needs are important. I think the historic issues are important. I think that everyone understands that the use of better communication is critical. But I don't believe we need to put in a moratorium. And I do believe that, that the issues addressed by Chin Yu in terms of, you know, T-Mobile potentially doing something, I'd like that, that addressed by Verizon, and I'd like some timeframe from somebody like T-Mobile, which is going to be used Elon Musk's issue, on what the timeframe is for that. Because if we do build it, and we prefer not to have it, we can always deconstruct it. So I look forward to the Verizon presentation, but I'd like that document given to them to consider in their presentation.
I, I can tell you that I have forwarded to the Verizon representatives, all the comments we have received from residents, to give them an opportunity to respond, including Chu Yen's, Meg Voits, and whatever others we received recently in the last several days, as well as the commentary that was made when we first began this discussion. So they should be in a position, and I would expect they would respond to the questions.
Correct.
Josh?
I'm sorry, is this specifically around the tower or just a general?
It's trustee comments, Josh, and you're, you can talk about anything you deem appropriate.
Yeah, I, because it's top of mind. I, I will say, I think having a referendum is gonna be a very high hurdle for me personally. I think it's, which I'm happy to address, you know, at the appropriate time. But I think it's incumbent on the the trustees to just make a decision on this issue. I'm very worried about a referendum being divisive and fueling, you know, issues in the community that we just don't need.
Okay, thank you. Trustee Turner, any, any comments?
Yeah, I'll just back on.
Yeah, I'll just back on, back of Josh's comments. I think the village has made a lot of progress recently, and I think a referendum can lead to divisiveness. So I'm also not in favor of that.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. All right. That being said, we open the floor to the public. Again, it's three minutes per speaker on any topic that you deem appropriate, that you want the board and the other members of the public to hear. And we'll start with those members of the public. Those members of the public that are here in the room, would you just raise your hand if you want to give a, yes, Ms. Gonzalez?
Hello, Molly Gonzalez, 94 Pine Hill. Relating to the cell tower, I think we all have a common goal of better service in Tuxedo. For safety reasons, it's top of everybody's minds. I am, however, confused why we should continue pushing this site and not doing any additional analysis on alternative options. Unlike many of the voices here who show interest in improved service, my family and I are here full-time, and I am raising them less than 240 feet away from the proposed location and 50 feet from the property line. The American Cancer Society and World Health Organization both classify extended exposure to radio frequency waves from cell towers as an increased risk of infection, especially in children and babies. For context, my kids are four and a half and nine years old. This is too close, no matter how you think about it. It would not stand to any of the village's existing laws, to which the trustees are not easily permitted to go around. So why are we continuing to push this forward? Modern cell towers are antiquated today, and this would take two to three years estimated to develop. Imagine the progress in that time. Given the speed of public health improvements, this does not seem like a rational choice for our historic neighborhood. The cheapest easy option for Verizon, we have not had our village in that much time. I was here in their September meeting when they both talked about putting a cell tower within 10 feet of a church and why would we entrust village property to people of this type of caliber? We urge the board and Verizon to study other options. If the site is available, significantly less than 10 feet from Tuxedo, it would be 10 times further to the nearest structure. We entrust you all of these positions. Both the aldermen and the fellow members, too much best for this village and it is common goal. We just study every available option. This is too close.
Thank you, Ms. Gonzalez. Yes, sir. Please state your name for the record.
Ruth Sting, currently relating in Littleton, Ohio, voting 37, Fox Hill. I'm here to express my weight, all of the folks, and my deep concerns and strong opposition. As a cell tower, Tuxedo Park, as parents of young children, their safety and the preservation of a community's unique environment are of the utmost importance to us. I urge you all, the trustees, reconsider this project and explore other alternatives. The proposed cell tower presents significant health risks to children, wildlife, and the natural environment. The structure of this magnitude emits powerful radiation. And with the tower planned to be less than 50 feet, we're bringing one toward 200 feet from Fox Hill, 400 feet from Volks. There's two votes. I've also learned that there's the structure that is intended or is being considered to be placed in the current race course, which is adjacent to my property line. As context, I have a, one of old, a three-over-old private room. We're there all the time and playing, or obviously playing in our backyard, which is adjacent. The long-term health effects of such radiation, especially on young children, still not fully understood. But I think precautionary principles should be guiding us in our community. Improving cell service on this is without question important to all of us. This cell tower is not the right solution. Large cell towers are more and more being replaced with distributed systems, which are not only safer but more effective. And we believe that installing smaller distributed cells on existing infrastructure like telephone poles will address coverage issues, but imposing such health risks as well as a visible and intrusive presence to our historic neighborhood. On the topic of the visual damage, a towering fake tree will be reversible. It'll dominate the ridge line. And, you know, views from the lake are just going to detract from the natural beauty and protective environment that we're surrounded by. We respectfully urge you to both know on this and to protect the health, beauty, and property values of Tuxedo Park by rejecting the cell tower proposal that it stands today. And we also are in full favor of exploring safer, less intrusive alternatives to improve cell service here. The safety of our children and the stewardship of this remarkable environment demands it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sting. Anyone else in the room? Mr. Mayhem? You're not Mr. Mayhem, but okay. Please state your name for the record.
Anthony Nelson, 117 South Hill Road, Tuxedo Park. Echoing everything that we've heard so far, that we would like to explore other technologies. Whether parents, Victoria and I are parents of two young children. We've seen, we've heard that there are other technologies available. We don't want, I think we're all supportive of improved cell coverage. We want that service. We can, I think we all understand the benefits of that. We certainly aren't looking to necessarily delay the process, but I do think that there's sufficient information on hand for these technologies. And I think if we're smart with the way we approach this analysis and bring it forward and share that information and look at those options and ensure that Verizon are forthcoming and take these other options seriously, then we put our support behind that.
Thank you, Mr. Nelson. Ms. Nelson?
Victoria Nelson, also 117 Tower Hill Road West. I would like to second everything that was just told. And on a separate note, would like to say that thank you very much for talking about referendums being something that is potentially divisive to the community. I also feel like the cell tower project, the way it's being conducted at the moment, is very divisive to the community. It feels like there is not a feeling that we're being heard. There is not a feeling that health concerns are being heard. There is not a feeling that alternative options are being considered. Absolutely understandably, I personally really want cell service absolutely into it. There's been many, many moments where I was not able to get on a work call, where I was not able to answer a very important email. Absolutely interested in cell phone service. But would like to, for this to be conducted in a way that unites the community and doesn't divide the community. And at the moment, there is a lot of very hard feelings. And having this so close to residential property, having it so close to our water, which personally bothers me a lot. One of the reasons why we moved out from the city is actually to be in a natural environment, to be surrounded by nature, and to have as little toxins in our body as possible. I'm actually really big on this. And one of the things that this potential radiation, which is very strong, I kind of looked at the numbers and was shocked by this. The fact that this is so close to our water, there's so much research about how water carries radiation. I would be very worried about using water in my house. Like, I actually started thinking about, like, well, what if filtration system should this happen? One of the things that I really urge us to do as a community is to not be divisive, is to work together, because it feels like the goal is actually very similar. We all want cell phone service. We all want it. But I hope that we can achieve it in a way that is good for everybody. Anyways, thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Nelson. Next, Mr. Mayhem?
So, building on some of the other comments, I think it's very disappointing that an approach is being advocated that is becoming increasingly divisive within our community, both with the tower without assessing other options, and also with respect to a referendum. Cell phone improvements are important to many residents. And I'm convinced personally that there's a solution to improving cell service in a way that benefits everyone, that does not impose a disproportionate cost or risk on specific individuals, which this proposal does. I think, Paul, I think you've got to mischaracterize a little bit the main purpose of the petition. Over 200 people, which is the current, I think the current count is 204, I believe, have signed a petition asking that the decisions, that no decisions be made until a task force with a well-qualified volunteer that's been interested in such issues investigate wireless communication solutions or options tailored to the service needs, historic character, and the physical environment of our village. In our, my opinion, and I think it's supported by the 200, but this is my opinion, we should be provided with a reasonable, this group should be provided with a reasonable budget to hire experts to understand the alternatives, both today and as technology evolves. Technology is moving rapidly, as we've heard, and what is available today will be different and better in two or three years when this cell, when the cell tower is finally permitted and built. And technology is going to continue to evolve. I think to permit and build a tower, I think Verizon articulated, will take two to three years. And, you know, things will continue to evolve and adopt as we go. I don't think, Paul, we should be relying on a vendor to tell us our alternatives. Verizon has invested interests. They have a solution that they're advocating for. They think it's the easiest, fastest, cheapest solution. That doesn't mean it's the right solution for the village. The village will not understand our alternatives unless we invest the time and resources with qualified people and a budget to be able to understand our alternatives. And I believe, and I think many others do, as we've heard, that there's a better solution to a problem which we all agree with than the one that's on offer. I do not know why we are rushing to judgment and trying to push this issue and ignoring the wishes of 200 people to properly evaluate our alternatives and understand the other alternative solutions, which many, many people believe exist. And this rush to judgment and this pushing this issue is causing enormous sets of issues within the village. Also, as it relates to cell towers, I do not believe that we should be imposing a disproportionate harm or risk on specific village residents to solve the cell service issue. It should not happen to anyone. It shouldn't happen to the Tenari, but it also shouldn't happen to any other village. If you ask if anybody would want a cell tower 100 or 200 feet from their house, I don't think anybody in the village would argue. Maybe one person was, but I think virtually no one would want a cell tower that close. It's 60 feet from the Tenari's property line, 200 feet from their home. It's 400 feet from Glorbina's home, and similar to one of our, to one of our structures. There's also other alternatives. For example, a cell tower in Eagle Mountain would have similar coverage issues and characteristics as the one on Ridge Road, and it would be 1,500 to 2,000 feet from the nearest house. There's already a road going up to the top. Why is this option not being considered or further, or further, which is further from residents and farther apart? Over 200 people more than voted for the mayor, or any of mayor, or I think have voted for any one person at any election, have asked to have a committee formed with well-qualified information to study the alternatives and give us our choices before we make a choice. And that's just not happening. It's being ignored. I think one other piece is that with respect to the referendum, I think our analysis, and we've obviously hired people to help us understand these choices, I don't believe it's permitted under New York, under New York law, specifically CLS BIL 9-912. There's only four permitted voluntary referendums that are permitted, which this is not one. And, you know, there was a case where somebody wanted to argue whether you could have, get rid of movie theaters on Sunday and have a referendum, and that wasn't deemed appropriate and was invalidated. And I think the proposed referendum would fall into the same thing. I think you would need to do your research. But I don't think a referendum is permitted under New York State's state. Most importantly, I think there's better, I think there's better solutions to solving the problem. But we need to explore the option. We should not be relying on a vendor to provide us our options. But Verizon is biased to the easiest, cheapest solution that's best for them. It's not the one that's necessarily best for our village. Technology is changing, and the approach that we're taking is creating an enormous amount of divisiveness within the community. And there's a way, properly studied, that we have alternatives, I think, are not going to propose disproportionate benefit on any one person and not yet solve or improve the issues. I think we've had enough divisiveness and division, and there's a more productive way forward for the one being taken today.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Mayhem. Anyone else in the room wish to speak? Okay.
Stefan Diaz, I think, has his hand up.
Mr. Diaz-Ellinghaus, or Ellinghaus-Diaz, I'm sorry, I don't remember which comes first.
Yeah, Diaz-Ellinghaus, hi.
Thank you, sir. Okay.
I'm on Potucket Road. I signed the petition. And I want to clarify, the request for a moratorium on the petition is not because we want to continue discussing it, but because we want to have time to explore options and be well informed. What is the best option? I've been investing in infrastructure for 20 years, specifically in digital infrastructure, including cell towers all around the world. And I say that because I know how Verizon operates. They have an agenda. They have a business model. And for everyone knows this, but they have obligation only to their shareholders. They do not have an obligation or fiduciary responsibility to our community. That resides only with us. Verizon is going to tell us what we, what they think we want to hear, so they can convince us to proceed with their plan. Having invest, having been 20 years in this industry, I also know that there's third-party consultants that can help us assess the best options, that can help us really understand different technologies. They can also help us understand, if we put up a cell tower the way Verizon is proposing it, is it actually going to have the coverage that the community desires in the summertime when the foliage is out? Or is it not? There's studies, there's maps, etc. One of those companies is called Waterford. I don't know if the Board of Trustees has explored some of these third-party independent consultants that can, that can validate what a carrier like Verizon is saying. In any event, happy, happy to discuss and share more of my experience in this space and investing in cell towers. I've been on the investing side. I've not been on the side where a tower has been built right next to me, so. But I have plenty of experience, and I'm happy to share that with the Board of Trustees if it's relevant. But I continue to stand by my signature dedication, and I think it makes sense to have a moratorium, not to continue to prolong a discussion, but to really have informed options and make a decision that's well informed.
Thank you, Mr. Diaz-Ellinghaus. Mr. Tenari?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello. Good evening, everyone. I apologize for not being able to attend in person. I came down with the flu, so I'm styled in here. But most of the previous speakers have really stolen my thunder, but I wholeheartedly agree with everyone has said. And I'd just like to start by reading an excerpt from an email that I sent to the trustees into the meeting record. So relating to the Verizon proposal and their process, since the September 30th public meeting, Verizon has not engaged with the residents to understand this issue better. They have not satisfied their commitments that they made on September 30th. The one thing that they did do is attempt another balloon test, which Mayor Citron, as you put in the last board meeting, was inconclusive. And we totally agree, there were several issues, including the weather, the high winds wasn't getting to the right height. It was set back 30 feet from the actual location because of the dense grove of trees. Verizon was flying the balloon at 105 feet, which is the height of a cell tower with one carrier on it. There's a few simple questions relating to that that we haven't received answers to. Will Verizon be the only carrier permitted in Tuxedo Park? If there are multiple, will they each have their own cell tower or be forced to co-locate? If they're forced to co-locate, the cell tower would be much higher than what Verizon is proposing, close to 140 feet. And our view is, if that is the plan, the visual testing and simulations and environmental analysis should be based on the final height. Additionally, after watching the recording of the meeting, they committed to several follow-up pieces of information. We have not received a single thing or engagement. Given it's been three months, we expect a large developer like Verizon to be able to fulfill its commitments, unless it's just paying us. Given it's been three months, we expect a large developer like Verizon to be able to fulfill its commitments unless it's just paying us lip service. I agree with what Chris just said. It's not responsible, and Stefan, it's not responsible to blindly trust a for profit entity. With significantly different goals in the residence. Just real quick, the following comment commitments have not been met. The leaf off balloon test was not done appropriately with clear photo simulations to reflect the seventy by thirty clearing. They committed to analysis of alternative sites, and we have not seen any data or information to support. One, that site being good, or really others being viable. They also committed to talking about distributed solutions. I think one of the other trustees asked them to do that and compare the costs, and maybe there was a. A gap that certain village residents might be willing to help close for a more distributed solution. It's not all about the costs to many of us. Clarification on lease terms. This is the most important one. These lease terms are really where the village gives up all of its rights if not negotiated appropriately. I do this all day, every day with, with much larger wind turbines, and the lease terms are incredibly important, and we haven't seen any of those yet. The last one is collaboration with the New York State Historical Preservation Entities that they're legally required to, and we understand none of that has happened. I'd also like to just say for the public, there is an existing cell tower that's owned by Orange County at the south end of the lake, and it's built for co-location. In my informal discussions with Verizon during the balloon test, they said it would be a viable alternative for the Ridge Road location. And I would ask the trustees to really fully run that down to see if it is a good solution for Tuxedo before, before entertaining the Ridge Road location. Real quick to address trustee Brooks' comments really quickly, if you, if you Google Verizon alone. They have three, three towers fall causing significant damage in the last ten years. I don't think that's a critical consideration for. The opposition, but it, but it is a real risk and there needs to be a plan to, to address it. I'd also remind the trustees that it is the responsibility of the trustees to form committees and experts to evaluate the options. It is not. The resident's most nearly impacted responsibility to fund studies in order to oppose the ideas. This is how we address every other issue in the park. Relating to deconstruction, Paul, what you said, once you lease the land to them, you don't have the ability to force them to decommission it. It goes to the end of the lease, no matter what the village wants. So in closing, if the trustees feel this matter is important enough for the first referendum in Tuxedo Park. We absolutely should be hiring experts that work for the taxpayers to evaluate our options. We do this on every other matter, big or small. And the trustees should be engaging with both sides of this discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tenarii. I, I just want to respond to one point you made, which is, as you well know, I reached out through. The county legislator that covers this district. To the Orange County Emergency Management Service with respect to that tower just east of the golf course. And I believe that I shared with you their initial response, which was, no, you can't use our tower. For, for cellular service to service the village. Whether that's the final word or not, that was certainly the initial reaction for various reasons relating to the lease of the land from the property owner. So I just want to point that out that I haven't sat on my hands with respect to your suggestion.
No, no, I appreciate that, and, and I, I will note for everyone, the legislator said he, he thinks there. Is a venue to push it through our, our, some of our elected officials nearby to see if that is the final answer. So I've just asked the trustees to really, really fully run that down before knocking it off.
Yeah, I would say that we do plan to do that, Matt, and obviously we're looking, we're all supportive of looking at all options. But I'd like to say we are not advocating for any particular solution, and we're not ignoring anybody. We've read all the letters. And taking them very seriously. But I, I thank you for bringing up that option that we will continue to explore.
Thank you.
Julian Hempel.
Thank you very much, Mayor. I, I want to thank trustee Brooks. For noting my suggestion that there are actually alternative technologies. And I, I agree with you that, with the board that. It's good to ask Verizon for their opinion, but at the same time, I think we really need independent knowledgeable advice. So I, I hope we're going to form some sort of a committee. And set aside a budget to do this due diligence as suggested by the other speakers. This morning, I sent you a note about the alternative satellite technology that I have found. But I'd like to sort of share that, my findings with my neighbors now, so if you could just bear with me. I, first, first of all, I'd like to say that I am in favor of improving cell service in the village. But I'm strongly against a proposed Verizon cell tower at the village water tanks. This is because, as I've stated, there are alternative, non-invasive solutions. For example, satellite enabled cell services. I'll give you a few examples. Everyone knows that Starlink is a proven satellite based wireless provider. And is widely used in places where the terrain is as challenging as Tuxedo, just like South Carolina. Now, T-Mobile, in partnership with Starlink, is launching later this year a direct to cell satellite enabled service. It will offer text initially with voice and data to follow. And all you need is your cellphone and a T-Mobile plan. The service was deployed successfully last year under emergency FCC approval. In areas affected by hurricanes Helen and Milton. And as of December sixteen, this service is being commercially beta tested. Starlink has given T-Mobile exclusivity in the U.S. on this satellite for just one year. After that, Starlink will be at liberty to sell its satellite service to other wireless carriers in the United States. Apple is also offering this year text by satellite on its Apple Watches. Even now, you can send SOS messages and pinpoint your current location on a satellite map. Using your iPhone fourteen or a higher model. Even Verizon has a satellite based SOS messaging and location sharing service called Skilo. The Verizon representative stated at the presentation in September. That it would take at least two to three years for cell tower to go through federal. And local reviews permitting an installation of a cell tower in a village listed on the National Register. And possessing strong local zoning, planning, and architectural codes. In two to three years, satellite cell service will be widely available from many carriers. So a cell tower is old technology, is equivalent to us buying at hefty cost. A VHS player when streaming is becoming available. And I say at hefty cost because the proposed tower is causing huge anxiety and unhappiness in our community, as you have witnessed tonight. And let's look at the even bigger picture. The cell tower would destroy our historic landscape, which together with the period houses. Formed the basis for the villagers listing on the National Register. The cell tower would contravene the Rich Line and precipice law put in place to protect the aesthetics and environment. That distinguished Tuxedo Park. A cell tower that requires the creation of a large seventy times thirty foot. Concrete platform would cause erosion control and surface water runoff to properties below. And a Verizon only cell tower, as Matt observed, would not benefit AT&amp;T or other carrier users. It would create surface equality and expose the village to requests by other carriers for their own towers. The BOT has been presented with a petition carrying an emphatic message that the proposed cell tower on Ridge Road is. Quote, "Not the right solution for Tuxedo Park," and the petitioners are asking you to explore alternatives. This petition has been signed, as Chris Mayhem noted, as of now, two hundred and four residents. Representing a very broad cross section of the villagers' demographics. And including all four former mayors still living in Tuxedo Park, as well as former trustees. Many residents have also written directly to you saying no to the proposed tower. So I implore you to take note of this overwhelming expression of public opinion. Don't be seduced by a seemingly easy solution offered by Verizon, which in reality. Would destroy this very special place of unique beauty. And incomparable historical significance, and particularly when alternative solutions. More appropriate to Tuxedo Park are available. And I'll, I'll just say one thing about the idea of the referendum. We are unhappy and anxious enough. Do we really want to draw this out with a referendum? By, and, and do we want a reprise of two thousand twenty-three? When the votes were contested and anger fled? So, thank you.
Well, I can assure you to the best of my ability with respect to your last comment. That should the board decide that a referendum is appropriate, that there will be no reprise. Of two thousand twenty-three and the circus that ensued after the election. Next speaker is Lindsay Maxwell.
Hi, I do support cell service, but I do not support this project. There's sort of four key areas. First being the proximity to residents' private property. I might have to end it there, but I don't support it.
We understand, Lindsay. Thank you very much. It's difficult enough being a young mother. Jim Hayes, Professor Hayes.
All right, can you hear me? I, I'm going to be very brief because much of what I wanted to say has already been said by others, but. Just to underline a number of the things which I think are most important. I'd like to tell you the following. First of all, I, I, like many others, are against the referendum. For, for a variety of reasons, I, I think, unless there's been a lot of educating of the, of the public about the alternatives and all of that. I think we, we're not gaining anything by a referendum. And I think that others have mentioned the importance of having, of other possibilities, not only those that are available now, but that, those that might be available. Within the next two or three years, which would be the amount of time that would take to erect the, the cell tower. That, so those, those should be, those should be publicly made. The public should be made aware of what all these other alternatives are and the, and the pros and cons that go with them. And I, I would agree with Chris that I think it's. It should be a general rule that we, we avoid inconveniencing. A few for the benefit of many. We're, we're all going to have situations which are peculiar to our own properties, but that we feel strongly about. And that, that the village as a whole should be very concerned about doing things that. Either lower the retail, the value of, of, of homes or in any other way inconvenience them. So that said, that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Professor. Anybody else? Susan's iPhone, would you just identify yourself, please?
Sorry, took me a minute to unmute there. I did send, this is Susan Burke O'Neill from two one two Continental. And I wrote the Tuxedo Park Board of Trustees a letter. I just wanted to reflect in the minutes of the meeting that. Michael and I strongly oppose the Verizon cell tower, that we do not oppose better, you know, service. And just to underscore pretty much what everyone else has said, this project threatens the historic and scenic. Integrity of our community, as the entire village is listed on the National Register of Historic Places. And the proposed site violates our local ridgeline protection law, requires extensive tree removal. And risks irreparable harm to the bucolic landscape that defines Tuxedo Park's character. Additionally, advancements in satellite enabled cell service are on the horizon, making this an outdated solution. So a cell tower would impose long term environmental, aesthetic, and financial costs. While dividing our community over an issue that could soon be obsolete. So I just want to underscore that I'm, I think of third party exploration of alternatives is the direction that we need to go. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Burke. Anybody else on Zoom wish to comment? Seeing none, we appreciate all the public comments. The trustees will consider everything that's been said, as we've considered everything that's been said over the last four months. And we will resume this discussion on February nineteenth. So let's move on now to the reports. The court report is made part of the record. The first live report is from our police chief, Alan Faust. Good evening, Chief.
Good evening. For the month of December, the police department responded to a hundred and twenty-seven calls. We had one motor vehicle accident. Issued eight tickets, nine warnings, three fire alarms, four burglar alarms. Two medical calls. The patrol twenty-six hundred and thirty-nine miles and had approximately seven hundred and three vehicles per day. Also, the Police Chiefs Association of Orange County. Was awarded a grant for two hundred thousand dollars for de-escalation training for law enforcement for. A situation of the mentally ill and other things, so. We'll be sending some of our officers to that, which is, their salaries will be fully refunded for that. And lastly, I've noticed a lot of the houses in the village. And they, they need to do a little bit of a better job getting some house numbers up front of the house to make it a little easier for. First responders, ambulants, and other things to get to their property, especially in an old village, the numbers are very. Scattered, so it's, it's quite challenging to find some houses if needed to be.
That's a very good suggestion, Chief. I have a couple of questions for you. The first one is, should the speed limit reduction pass? Is it your department that will reduce the speed limit, the flashing sign on the causeway?
Yeah.
You'll reprogram it? Okay, and in terms of enforcement. Does there have to be any change in the uniform traffic ticket if summonses are being written for violating the speed limit, or is it essentially the same form?
It would be, it would be the same form.
So there's no additional cost?
No, as long as it just changes in the village law.
So the only additional cost theoretically is the two posted signs at either end of the village, right?
Correct.
Okay, thanks.
Of course, there's always slower, slower speeds, they save lives, so it would be in the village's best interest.
Well, thank you for that endorsement. We'll, we'll discuss that as, as it becomes an agenda item. Thank you so much. Okay, next we have the supervisor Jeff Boss of the DPW.
Good evening. Yes, I'll start with the past week or so. It's been nothing but repairing water main, breaks and service line leaks. We had, we did one today by Steve's pizza on Route seventeen that I had no way to shut the line off in order to make the repair. So I had to call in an outside contractor that, that's all they do. They work on. Water mains where they can't be shut down and. So it went very well. I was impressed with, with the work that they did.
You guys did the excavating though, right?
Yeah, it was a joint effort. We did, we, we opened the hole up, they came, cut the pipe and repaired it. We've. Faulted roads December twentieth, twenty-first, twenty-eighth, January sixth, and January eleventh. Plowed, plowed roads with the little snows that we had on December twenty-first and December twenty-fourth. We worked with Nelson Tree Service, removing some dead trees on Turtle Point Road and Fox Hill Road. Worked on plow equipment and, and vehicles, trucks. Washed all the trucks out, salt out of the town, involved in breaks. Picked up Christmas trees, picked up fallen trees on Much Lake Road, Summit Road, East Lake Dable Road. Also. I had a problem at the Jastaloo rental where I live with the heat system. The heat pipes run under the house and crawl space. The heat pipes run under the house and crawl space for some odd reason. Anyway, if one of them broke and we had to call an outside plumber to go underneath, we had to make holes in the foundation so they can get underneath there to replace a piece of pipe. Everything's working fine now, so.
I think Deputy Mayor Lindsay has some thoughts on, on the heating system for your house?
Well, I was just wondering if, uh, heat pumps were a feasible option.
I don't, I, I don't really think it would be based on, you know, the house is not well insulated at all. I, I don't know enough about it, but I don't think, uh, heat pump system would be.
Maybe if we improve the insulation as well.
Yeah, I mean, sure, if you were to do that, I'm sure it would.
It is a village-owned property.
Right, it's an asset.
It's an asset of the village, so we'll, we'll, we'll discuss that. I'm glad that you have your heat back on.
Yeah.
That's the most important thing.
For water, I just spoke about basically, um, we also, we cleared a sewer block in, uh, on Stable Road, did various market, utility markouts. We also repaired a water line at the wastewater treatment plant. John's been trying to get meters finished up for the fourth quarter.
That'd be John Bello.
Bello, yes. And that's it. That's the, the biggest part of it, uh. I would, uh, there are some other items for me on the agenda that can we did stuff now?
Yes, I, I certainly, I know there were recommendations for DPW hires. There's no reason for you to sit here and cover those, as well as I think you have a request for a new truck. So please feel free to address those.
Let me, let me address the, the truck first. We did budget for it, it's in the budget. Um, it's actually, the truck I drive is a two thousand fourteen truck with a hundred and fifty thousand miles on it that has a lot of issues. And it's falling apart. It's, it's way past its youthful life. So I got a, I got a proposal. It's, uh, off of Onondaga County bid for police and administrative, administrative vehicles, I guess. It's a two thousand twenty-five Chevy three-quarter ton pickup with a plow. Um, the total price is sixty-five thousand, three seventy-seven ninety-five. We typically, what we've been doing for the last fifteen years is financing for five years. That's what we put in fifteen thousand in this year's budget, and then it would be for another four years. So I would ask the board's approval to move forward with placing an order for it since it will take probably four months before we would see it.
My, my understanding on that is that as it's a state bid, it was a state bid by this particular dealership, that we don't have to go through an RFP or, or, or comparison shopping, so to speak.
Right, and, and this happened to be a Chevy. I looked into a Ford, which is what I have now. Uh, they don't offer the extended cab pickup, um, in a six-and-a-half-foot bed. It's an eight-foot bed, longer wheelbase, which just doesn't make sense up here. It's hard enough to try to plow snow with what we have. So it's not available anymore with the Ford. That's why I went with the Chevy.
Would you leave that estimate for us? You can reprint it, right?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, we have it, okay. Um, and, and there, there were a couple of hires you wanted to talk about.
Yes, well, um, Michael Wilson started working on Monday, this past Monday. Um, I have a gentleman I would like the board to approve me hiring. Uh, his name is Aiden Brown. He's young, he's twenty-one years old, but, uh, he has experience with snow plowing and, you know, landscaping and, you know, the other stuff we can teach him. I followed his references from his application. Everything was positive. He's dependable, he's a hard worker, willing to learn. So I would ask the board if we can, uh, move forward with hiring.
Sure, and essentially, these, these two new workers, Michael Wilson and Aiden Brown, are replacing the retiree, Dan Hagland, as well as Dominic Posta who resigned. So we're not adding any staff, we're essentially replacing them. And, and you found them to be acceptable candidates, and you're recommending that the board approve their hiring?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you. All right.
Oh, uh, and moving Dan's leading up to road foreman.
Right, yeah. Dan's been working for a long time, and he would be replacing Dan Hagland as the, as the road foreman. And it, this, that also comes with your recommendation.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Thanks. You don't have to stick around. You can go, you can go home. Thanks, thanks, Jeff. Okay. Uh, we have one. We, I, John had one, I guess.
Is the, uh, repair to the DPW truck additional?
Oh, yes, um. Yeah, so, uh, the the truck was up at Arkell Motors since March of last year. The original estimate to make the repairs was eighteen thousand, five hundred and change.
This was a major engine repair, right?
It was, uh, the turbo on the truck and, yeah, it was, it was a lot of work. The original estimate was eighteen thousand, five hundred. Um, they had to do some extra work, a little extra work, so it came out to twenty thousand. I don't have the little, just over twenty thousand. Uh, the board did approve the eighteen-five. So we need to, uh, approve the, the extra.
The balance, yeah.
The balance.
And you got the truck back, right?
Yes, and it's, it's, everything is fine.
All right, great. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Okay, and, and good work on the, uh, the water main. Appreciate it. I know it's awfully cold to be working in a, in a, in a pit filled with water this time of year. All right, um, next we have John Ledwith, the Building Department.
Uh, we had one CVO issued to, uh, eight, uh, a number of inspections were conducted through the month. There were no, uh, no problems during the inspections. And the bar and the planning board remained busy, uh, through, uh, through February.
Right, okay. Thank you, John. All right, uh, Water Department records were attached to, to the, uh, to the record as agenda items, uh, the agendas. The treasure reports were also attached to the record. Uh, Deputy Mayor, anything on climate smart you wish to, uh, update us on?
I know, uh, Trustee Brooke had some questions about the, uh, CCA program and the community solar program, so I'll write those up for you and, and distribute it, and we'll post it as well. And just very quickly, uh, Fred Buell and Jim Hayes are working diligently on a, um, climate action plan.
And I see that they're both, at least they were both on at some point.
Yeah.
All right, that completes the report, so I'll make a motion to be resolved that the board add all written reports to the permanent record. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Trustee Brooke, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, uh, passed unanimously. Uh, now we move on to the approval of, of meeting minutes. We're only going to vote on the December eighteenth, two thousand twenty-four regular meeting minutes. Uh, we're gonna hold off until next month on the January ninth, even though it's on the special meeting. So, um, uh, has everybody had a chance to look at the, at the minutes? Uh, December eighteenth? I'll, I'll move that, uh, the Board of Trustees approved the minutes from the meeting of December eighteenth, two thousand twenty-four. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Trustee Brooke, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Everybody says aye, five zero. It passes Elizabeth. The next item on the agenda, as you know, we had a, uh, we had a special meeting on January ninth, uh, with a very positive discussion, a presentation by the Deputy Mayor. And, uh, Deputy Mayor, I'll turn it over to you for, uh, further, uh, further information and recount.
Okay, um, I'm sharing the engineer's report for the capital projects, uh, the main capital projects, uh, that we discussed on January ninth. And we'll just go through them quickly. Uh, the engineers, uh, not here tonight, but if you would like any specific information about these projects, um, the, uh, the record, the recording is available. Uh, so.
I'm trying to.
Sounds like Fred.
Fred. So, uh, okay. So the green-coded projects are sewer projects, the blue are water main replacement projects. The yellow are general fund projects. And then the others are, uh, in white that aren't coded are capital projects that we are considering but will not be bonded. So the the color-coded ones are the projects we are, uh, proposing to be bonded. The first one is, uh, the required, uh, improvements to the sewer system. These are required by the DEC. And, uh, we will be looking at doing this in two phases. See if I can move this around. There we go. Okay. All right, so, uh, the first phase, uh, it will be a hundred and fifteen thousand. The second phase will be five hundred and fifteen thousand. Uh, we will be, uh, talking about the bonding and the impact on the debt service after I just, uh, discussed these projects. Okay, the second one is the, uh, the first of the water main replacements under Tuxedo Lake. It goes from the water treatment plant directly west, uh, over to the west side of, uh, the park. It serves that side of the park. And in, um, Joe Zongle's report from Weston and Sampson, he was noting that the best information we have is that it was installed in nineteen thirty-three. So we are, uh, looking at nearly a hundred-year-old, uh, water main serving the west side of the lake. And so we are proposing to do this in two phases as well. First phase would be starting this year. Uh, we will, that phase will be four hundred and thirty thousand, and then we'll complete it the following year for five hundred and thirty thousand. Sorry for the back and forth. Uh, next, water main is, uh, the East Village. It starts on the west side of Route seventeen and goes under the highway. It goes under the railroad, and then it comes out at Powerhouse Lane. That's the first phase. And, uh, it is a very difficult part of the water main to replace because of all the requirements going under the highway, the requirements that the, uh, MTA, uh, requires and all those additional costs. So that would be, uh, the first phase of East Village Water Main. That's gonna be done in three phases. Let's see, the first phase will start this year. Uh, it is the most expensive phase, a million, sixty thousand. And, uh, then we feel that the other two phases can be delayed until two years after. Last of the water mains is Mountain Road Water Main in the Hamlet. And, uh, we will do that in three phases, starting, uh, this year. I'm sorry, we're gonna start that the second year. Um, so that'll be nine hundred and ninety-three thousand, and in the third year of all of these capital projects, it will be six hundred and twenty-three thousand. Sound like big numbers, but we'll show how we're gonna finance it. Um, okay, so the projects that will be paid from the general fund uh, are the Summit Road retaining wall. We're, uh, still working with that, uh, estimate of three hundred and thirty-nine thousand. And then the other project is the Pond Three Bridge Replacement and Repair of the Masonry. So that, uh, is being estimated at two hundred and one thousand. The other capital projects that we are recommending is, uh, the build-out of the village office to allow for much better file storage. And, uh, right now it is not adequate at all, and it has to be repaired or remediated. Uh, John Ledwith needs more room for his office. And by using the existing footprint, I think the architects have done a very good job, uh, with everybody's input of using the existing footprint, uh, adding a, uh, the, a meeting room behind us and, uh, being able to use this current space for, or for, uh, another office and a conference room. The, uh, Dam Slough, which we will fund, not with bonds, uh, is definitely, uh, necessary according to our engineer. He feels that the DEC will be requiring it. So that will get done. And then we are working on getting estimates for repair of the stream overpass and, uh, guardrail near the waterfall on West Lake Road. That, that road, if you've been over there, is collapsing. So those are the main projects we are recommending to the board. I will now, let's see, I'll stop sharing this one. And show you the impact on debt service. So the general fund projects that, uh, I mentioned will see a slight increase, uh, in the first year. Then, uh, I'm, let me go back and explain this bar chart. So the, uh, dark blue is our current debt service. So you can see that it's a little over four hundred and twenty thousand a year in debt service. That's principal and interest, and it is projected to decline. So when we do these new projects, we'll be adding probably about fifteen thousand just in the one year in debt service. But then you can see that the total current and new debt service will be declining. The water fund is, uh, this is if the estimates are, uh, come out to be true and, uh, if we go on the current schedule. So right now you can see the dark blue, our debt service is a hundred and thirty-three thousand. Over the next, uh, three, six years, it'll, it'll climb up. It'll peak at just under four hundred and fifty thousand, and then it'll come back down. So our goal with revenue to the water fund is to try to get to that uh, three hundred thousand dollar amount, which is right, you know, at the, at the tail end. And anything above that will be subsidized by current funds in the, uh, water fund. We have, uh, over a hundred percent of our operating budget in reserves. We have, um, approximately right now a million three in the NY class, um, investments, and those will be able to be used to subsidize the debt service. The impact here will be, we looked at an average, uh, water bill and, uh, which, you know, the water bill includes the capital improvement fee of twenty dollars a quarter. Uh, we anticipate, and plus the water rate, um, on your usage. So we anticipate an average bill of about seven hundred thousand would see an increase of about, uh, thirty dollars a quarter. And that will be sufficient to pay the debt service. Okay, here's the sewer fund. The, uh, again, dark blue is the current debt service. We have loans, uh, coming off after next year. So the current year, um, then we would add then we would add this new debt service to uh, tackle the projects that we talked about that are required. So there will be uh, need for a slight increase uh, in debt fund revenues. But it shouldn't really uh, anticip- we don't anticipate more than ten or fifteen dollars uh, a quarter additional uh, for each account. So I'd like to just emphasize once again that none of these projects require an increase in property taxes. Sewer fund debt will be paid from the sewer fund, water fund debt will be paid from the water fund, and the uh, general fund projects will be paid from the general fund. Any other, before I talk about the timeline, do you have uh, any questions?
Hey, trustees have any questions for the deputy mayor? Josh, Jedidiah?
I, I don't. I thought, Michelle, you did an excellent job of um, summarizing this. And uh, I really appreciate all the hard work you've done to get us to this point. I've said it in the past. I mean, we have aging infrastructure that has been um, we, we just haven't invested the way we needed to. So these, these projects are all, all critical. And again, I appreciate everything you've done to get us to this point.
Well, thank you. But yeah, I do want to say Tom Birmingham is here tonight and he has helped me uh, you know, kind of weigh the options here, as well as the rest of the capital projects committee, yourself included, Chair Joanne Hansen, uh, Gardner Hempel.
Yes. All of those people.
Yes.
Thank you.
Jedidiah, anything?
No, no, I think just to thank you and the committee for doing the work. We, we need to take care of our aging infrastructure. And this seems like a prudent way to go about it.
Uh, I, on behalf of the village, I, I want to thank the deputy mayor. I want to thank Tom. Uh, I want to thank the balance of the committee, the chair, Joanne, uh, Gardner Hempel. You know, this village is replete with expertise, you know, people, whether it's financial or banking, law, not so much maybe. But um, uh, we were so fortunate to have the deputy mayor uh, take charge of this. As, as a former vice president of municipal bond work at, at J P Morgan Chase. Uh, it was just appropriate that she handle it and she did a magnificent job with the assistance of Tom Birmingham. And, and on behalf of the village, uh, we, we thank you for, for this. Cause they were meeting every week to, to, to prepare this, this, these numbers and to do these charts. And, and, and we couldn't, we could not have accomplished and reached this point without you. So, thank you very much. Okay, um, with that being said, um, is there a resolution?
Uh, do you want to do the resolution now?
Uh, yeah, that would be appropriate. Yeah, sure.
All right, so just to go over the, the timeline, uh, at the next board meeting, we will uh, a vote on a bond resolution that will be prepared by our bond council. Uh, then after that, uh, the timeline to get to a closing on May third is that we have to have a thirty day permissive referendum period, allowing people to, you know, come before us with a permissive referendum request. Uh, then after that, there's a notice of a stopple, which is a twenty day period. And then we prepare the official statements and um, send them out to potential underwriters. So, May third is our target date, but we have to uh, to get going. We need to pass the bond resolution February nineteenth. So I'd like to make a motion to authorize bond counsel from Harris Beach to prepare the bond resolution for vote on the February B O T meeting, Board of Trustees meeting.
I'll, I'll second that motion.
Okay, any discussion?
Yeah, I have one question.
Okay.
Uh, if I might go first, uh, do we have any sense of what it costs us for these administrative fees for munistad and, and the lawyers? Just a, just a ballpark figure as to what, what we have to pay out of pocket to get all this done.
So, but our bond advisor, Noah Needelson, who was on the call last week, he estimates seven thousand dollars.
To- total administrative cost.
Well, then we, because we're doing bond anticipation notes, not bonds. Uh, we don't have to go for a movie rating. That would be additional. That will be in the future. Yeah, that's what they, they said combined.
Great, great, thanks. Okay, so we have, that, that's my only point. Josh, I'm sorry.
Really simple point. I would just ask that when you pass the resolution, you don't lock in uh, February nineteenth. I would suggest you say the next uh, 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 board meeting. Um, I already know that Jed and I are both gonna be out of the country in very different time zones. Um, so um, just build in some flexibility.
Sure. So I'll revise the motion to authorize bond counsel from Harris Beach to prepare the bond resolutions for the next Board of Trustees meeting.
The next regularly scheduled Board of Trustees meeting. We, we have other meetings we may have, but okay.
Okay.
I'll second that. I'll second it. All, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Trustee Brooke?
Yeah, I said aye. Yeah, I mean, one of the things that people should be aware of, and thank you for that presentation, is two thirds of the debt service is connected with fulfilling an obligation for water for the town. Not for village needs.
Of the new bond issuance.
Of the new bond issuance.
Yes, we have uh, bonds um, outstanding, obviously.
Reflecting that there's a historical anomaly, which is the village agreed to provide water to the town. Water is paid for by the town. The cost of the provision here is in our court. And it's two thirds of the bond issue.
Now, when you say it's in our court, what, what do you mean by?
We're raising the money for it.
Through the water billing?
Right.
Yes.
Well, we're raising the money for it. Theoretically, it'll be repaid through water billing.
Right.
Which everyone pays, but the capital cost is fully our own.
I don't understand that.
We're raising the money. And sixty-five percent of the money we raise goes to providing infrastructure to supply the town's water needs, not our water needs.
But there are customers and.
You're not, you're not.
Yeah.
The people pay for their water, right?
They, and, and the debt service.
Case, people should be aware, the two thirds of that bond issue is to pay for an obligation to the town which the village does not benefit from.
I'm not sure benefit is the right word. Okay.
Well, let, let, let me just make a point that, that which uh, deputy mayor brought up in response to, to trustee Brooks' comments. If we were to cut off the town water uh, service and no longer receive revenue from the town, commercial and residential. Do we know, and I'm not asking anybody to answer that question, but do we know if we would have enough revenue from village residents only to maintain our water system? That's a question you, you raised, and I think it's a good question. If we were to cut them off and lose all that revenue, could we continue to deliver water and operate the water plant with the revenue we get solely from village residents and the tuxedo club? And that's, that's a subject for future discussion.
Right.
This is another question, which is, could you even do that? Not that we want to, but could you even?
No, could we even do that? I mean, it's, it's a question of numbers. I'm not saying we're going to. I'm saying that if we were to even consider it, could we continue to operate our water department?
Yeah, it's numbers. It'll also be litigation. We'd be sued, but fine, why don't we keep going?
Well, I, I, just one last point, just uh, of point of fact is that there are more residential accounts outside the village than inside the village. And we have seventy commercial accounts in the town, and they pay higher rates. So, just, just simple points.
All right, uh, let, thank you for the presentation.
Can I say something? Um, I'm, I'm just, I'm sorry, I didn't want to interrupt your conversation, but just prior to that, when we were talking about the bond resolution, we went from saying to authorize bond counsel from Harris Beach, prepare bond resolutions for the February B O T meeting. And then after trustee Scherer spoke, um, trying to emphasize, don't go with the specific date. I think that's where his point was. And then you changed it to for the next regularly scheduled B O T meeting, unless I misunderstood. But the next regularly scheduled B O T meeting is the February meeting, so.
It may change, that's the only point.
Because we may not have.
I see.
We may not have. Right.
Okay.
We may not have a quorum for the nineteenth.
I see, okay.
That will be the next regularly scheduled meeting.
Well, you're right. Thank you.
Okay, all right, okay. Um, then uh, we, we move on now to the uh, uh, follow up to the public hearing with respect to the uh, reduction of the speed limit uh, for discussion of uh, by the trustees. So uh, we should have a motion on the floor, be it resolved that the Board of Trustees adopt intro- introductory law, local law number one of twenty twenty-five, uh, which is the reduction of the village wide speed limit from thirty to twenty-five miles per hour. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by the deputy mayor, uh, discussion.
Yeah, so let me, let me chime in, I guess, um, from my perspective, I, I think this is uh, worthwhile in doing, and let me just give a little um, kind of background. I think Josh mentioned, if you're going twenty-five versus thirty, leaving the village, it adds thirty seconds or something. Um, I've started driving at twenty-five miles an hour. And it's not a material difference. What I will say is a material difference is the safety. Listen, it's a well-known phenomenon that drivers often exceed the speed limits by five to ten miles, whether you're in the village or you're on a highway. Very rarely do people actually go the posted uh, speed. They, they generally go about five miles over. If you're hit by a car going thirty miles an hour, the data says that your rate of survival is about eighty percent. If you're hit at forty miles an hour, it drops to ten to twenty percent. At twenty-five miles an hour, the likelihood of a pedestrian surviving is about ninety percent. So, to me, some people might, might not like it, but I think it's in the best interest of our village to lower the speed limit. And I'm very supportive of this.
Trustee Scherer, any comment?
I mean, we share our roads with cars. It's not a big park. Slow down. We don't, we just don't, we don't need to zip around the park. And uh, it's, it's a big safety issue for everyone. Pets. To be honest, I lost a cat in the park because it got hit by a car. I don't know that that car was speeding or not, but um, vehicles kill. And uh, you know, someone earlier mentioned that we don't have sidewalks and there's no possibility for sidewalks. So it is a shared road. Um, and it needs to be safe, as safe as possible. Um, so, um, I'm, always have been supportive and, and will be supportive and you know, I don't, you know, we heard from the chief earlier. I don't think this is additional red tape or bureaucracy. Um, you know, I think Alan Barnett brought up a good point about enforcement. I'd love to see uh, more enforcement if it's um, factually correct that we're, we're not. I actually think we are, but um, you know, we need to enforce and and mayor, you brought up a good point. This is, this is not about revenue. It's not about revenue. And so I don't really, you know, I think if someone gets a speeding ticket, they should uh, um, you know, that, that should be the violation that they're um, you know, charged with and, and have to and pay. And that means, you know, revenue is going to the state or the town. I, I personally don't care. This is not a big revenue generating uh, exercise for us.
Hey, thank you, deputy mayor, anything?
Um, some part of, of improving the safety.
Yeah, I, I just want to read two excerpts uh, into the record. Uh, this is from the New York City D O T. Uh, vehicle stopping distance improves by forty-five feet, twenty-three percent when traveling at twenty-five miles per hour versus thirty-five, thirty miles per hour. This small five M P H decrease in speed means that many crashes can be avoided altogether. The speed at which a vehicle is traveling directly impacts the likelihood of death for pedestrians who were struck. And let me follow it up by one other excerpt. This is from uh, NewYorkSafeStreets.org. Did you know that a vehicle traveling at thirty miles per hour is about seventy percent more likely to kill a pedestrian than one driven at twenty-five miles per hour? With the passage of the twenty-five mile per hour statewide speed limit bill that I referred to earlier, communities can now adopt this safer speed limit. That's all I really have to say on this matter. Trustee Brooke, would you like to add anything to your comments?
No, we've heard about it. We should just go to a vote. We don't need to.
We want, we want to hear from you.
No, you don't. No, you don't.
Okay.
My, my, my attitude is, we, we should take these meetings and try to run them as efficiently as we can, right? So, you know, when it's time for a vote, if we air the issues, we have a vote.
I, I would, I'm in favor then, let's vote.
Okay, I called a question.
We have a second.
Uh, we, uh, someone seconded already.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So I called a question. Um, deputy mayor Lindsay.
Aye.
Trustee Scherer.
Aye.
Trustee Turner.
Aye.
Trustee Brooke.
Aye.
And the mayor votes aye. Uh, the vote is four to one. Congratulations. Thank you all very much. Uh, Elizabeth will take care of the administrative.
Mayor, when does this go into?
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm about to, to give that speech, so to speak. Uh, Elizabeth will take care of notifying the Secretary of State.
Yes, I always do when we.
Of the change in the law. And, and Jared, I don't think this is a, requires a, a confidential conversation. Do you know offhand how long after the passage of the law and the filing with the Secretary of State, the law becomes effective?
Upon receipt by the Secretary of State.
Okay, thank you. And uh, we will provide notice to the village, uh, email notice, notice at the front gate, you know, the, the old fashioned way with, with signs before we actually post the new signs which we'll purchase from the appropriate provider. But everyone will be on notice upon entering the village and they'll be given sufficient notice before any enforcement begins by the police department. Thank you.
Well, thank you.
Uh, now to some uh, more mundane issues. We have employee resignations. Uh, Richard Marsh uh, was a part-time police officer. Uh, as most of you know, uh, Richard Marsh is now the chief of police of the town of Tuxedo, and we congratulate him uh, on that appointment. Naturally, once he became a town police chief, he could no longer serve in the capacity of a part-time police officer. Uh, also Dan Hagland, as I had mentioned previously, uh, re- retired from his position. And uh, we wish him well in retirement. And finally, Dominic Posta, a young D P W laborer uh, resigned effective January first, twenty twenty-five. So be it resolved that the Board of Trustees accept the resignation for the following employees. Richard Marsh, effective November twelfth, twenty twenty-four. Dan Hagland, effective November thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. And Dominic Posta, uh, effective January first of twenty twenty-five. Do I have a second? Second, second by trustee Brooke. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, now we move on to the new hires for the D P W. You already heard that uh, superintendent Voss has recommended these two young men to join the department. So be it resolved that the Board of Trustees approve the hiring of the following employees. Michael Wilson, a D P W motor equipment operator. The date of his hire was January thirteenth of twenty twenty-five, and Aiden Brown, who will be a D P W working leader. Date of hire will be today's date, January fifteenth, twenty twenty-five. Uh, do I have a second for that motion? Second by trustee Brooke. All, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous, okay. Uh, uh, next is the promotion of Dan Squilleney uh, to D P W road foreman. Be it resolved that the Board of Trustees recommend the appointment of Dan Squilleney to D P W road foreman effective January fourteenth, twenty twenty-five. I'll make the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by the deputy mayor. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, uh, next item on the agenda is the D P W truck repair. The superintendent described for us that we authorized the repair of the engine at about eighteen thousand five hundred. But uh, due to additional work, the final bill came to twenty thousand, six hundred and four dollars and fourteen cents. Be it resolved that the Board of Trustees authorizes an increase in the cost of repairing a D P W truck from eighteen thousand, five hundred and eighty-eight dollars and thirty-nine cents. from eighteen thousand five hundred and eighty eight dollars and thirty nine cents to twenty thousand six hundred and four dollars and fourteen cents. The Board of Trustees, as I mentioned previously, approved this expense on March twentieth of two thousand and twenty four. Do I have a second? Second by trustee Brooke, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, okay, that passes unanimously. The next item is the Pond and Lake Algae Treatment Contract. I'm going to table that because we actually have two bidders for algae treatment. And let's see who comes in lower. We have Solitude Lake Management and Pond and Lake Connection. They both promised within the next month to provide us with proposals to treat Tuxedo Lake as well as Pond Three to avoid, as Jedediah, trustee Turner remembers, was created, had some algae problems over the summer. So we'll we'll vote on this in February when we have the proposals in front of us. Next item after that, Weston and Sampson Proposal for Engineering Services. Their on-call services contract, this is the general contract that the engineering company provides to us on an annual basis. In reviewing the contract, I actually requested they reduce the hourly rate of one of their professionals because there is a bump up for each of the professionals. The hourly rate went up and one of the professionals, for some reason, went up much higher than the other. And Joe Zongle, on behalf of Weston and Sampson, was amenable to reducing that rate so that it's reflect, all all the rates went up essentially the same percentage. So this is the annual contract. Be it resolved that the Board of Trustees approve the on-call services contract for Weston and Sampson for two thousand and twenty five. I make the motion, do I have a second? Second by trustee Brooke, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye, unanimous. The next is a specific proposal for Weston and Sampson to provide engineering services for the Tuxedo Lake Water Main Replacement that the Deputy Mayor discussed during her presentation. Be it resolved that the Board of Trustees approve the Weston and Sampson Proposal for Engineering Services for Tuxedo Lake Water Main Replacement. I'll make the motion, do I have a second? Second by the Deputy Mayor, any discussion? What what's that number, do you recall off the top of your head?
I think it's for the design, I believe the design and permitting and that part of the work was ninety nine.
Yeah, it was about a hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah. Right.
Okay. No, any other discussion? It's it's work that that has to be done. We, if we were to, you know, it's a risk, we're, it's a risk that 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 water main fails and then the people on the west side of the lake don't have any water service, which would be a catastrophe. So we have to move in that general direction. Anybody else have a comment on it? I mean, the trustees, I don't mean the public, okay? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Trustee Brooke?
Aye.
Passes unanimously. We have to do an annual dam certification, so we have to authorize Weston and Sampson to complete the annual dam certification forms. Be resolved that the Board of Trustees authorize Weston and Sampson to complete the annual dam certification forms. I'll make the motion, is there a second for that?
Second.
Second by trustee Brooke, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, all right, unanimous. The next one is water meter clearwell calibration. I I I turn to you, John, to explain what what that is.
Yes, when Weston and Sampson was analyzing the need for repairs to the Clearwell, they did some preliminary tests to make sure that the meters that are used in the water plant are accurate. They found that the meters could be off between two and five percent. So we would recommend that Jeff Voss contact the company we've used in the past to recalibrate that meter. I'm sorry, I don't have an estimate for you, but I don't think it'll exceed a thousand dollars, well, to be honest with you. And if it does, I'll let you know.
Please let us know. Well, well, be it resolved that the Board of Trustees authorizes the expenditure of up to a thousand dollars for water meter clearwell calibration by the company that Jeff Voss has previously used. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by trustee Brooke, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, and that that comes out of the water fund, I.
Yes, it does.
Operating, okay. The next item is grievance day. Every year, there's a tax grievance day for residents. Trustee Sher, based on your dis, your mentioning of being out of the country, is there, is there an issue with respect to February eighteenth, which is the proposed grievance day?
Yeah, so if you just give me one second.
And 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 trustee Turner, also you, is February eighteenth.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not in the country that week, unfortunately for work.
Okay. Well, John, the requirement is that we have a quorum of at least three, right?
Yes.
Is February eighteenth written stone based on state requirements?
My recollection is the third Tuesday of February is the latest date that could be. And that's February eighteenth, so it could be a little earlier, but it can't be any later.
All right, gentlemen, could, do you have your calendars in front of you?
I'm looking at it right now, so I leave on the twelfth and I return on the twenty third. The twelfth is a Wednesday and I return on a Sunday. So any anytime before.
So February eleventh would work for you, right?
It it should work, yeah.
Trustee Turner, February eleventh?
Yeah, yeah, it's not ideal, I have my company board meetings the tenth and eleventh, but I can make it work.
You don't have to appear in person, you know.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, John, would that be possible for us to to actually advance the date one week?
I'd like to check with the village attorney tomorrow to see legally if it can be held that early. We've never had it that early before, so I'm not unsure.
All right, well, well, thi- this is an administrative matter, so we'll we'll move on at this point and and get back to everybody.
And and I will just say, if it's truly, it it is administrative and I'm going to probably be thirteen hours ahead. I'll make it work if for whatever reason we can't move so that we have a quorum, so.
Okay, thank you.
Can be online because I'm, I'm at a board meeting on the eighteen, out of the town, but in this country. So let's see if we can work.
Well, we need three bodies.
We 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 need a quorum during the four hours, it doesn't have to be the same quorum.
Right.
But we need a quorum during the.
You need three people sitting in chairs, yeah, three people sitting in chairs on the date that we select. Okay, so we know we have to have three people here during the four hour period. Doesn't have to be the same three people, but we have to have at least three people. So when I say administrative, I don't mean tax grievances are administrative, I mean the scheduling is administrative. We'll work it out, guys, okay?
And Mayor, there's one other thing, we need to hold a meeting to review the changes in the assessments. That has to be done. If we could do that, you know, by or before the twenty seventh of this month, and I will circulate those changes in advance.
Okay, so everybody who's, would everybody check their calendar?
It's open to the public, but no public comments.
Yeah, and that twenty seventh is what day of the week?
Twenty seventh is a Monday. If we did it by that day, that would give me three or four days to prepare the paperwork.
Back end of next week, we do that.
We can do it the twenty fourth, it's up to you, but.
It's Friday?
That's a Friday.
During the day is fine for me, the twenty fourth.
Ja, trustee Turner, the twenty fourth, during the day?
I'm I'm I'll make whatever, yeah, I'll make whatever works.
Okay.
And and that meeting is.
But I can call in.
Okay, well, we need, we need three people, we need three people in the seats for that that meeting.
I I, if it's the twenty fourth, if we lock that in, I can, I can commit to to being there in person on the Friday.
Okay, at what time, John?
Anytime during the day in the meeting is, as long as you need time just to review the draft changes.
I mean.
We do afternoon?
Yeah, afternoon would be preferred if possible.
Afternoon would be, how about two o'clock? Two P M, January twenty fourth, for the Board of Assessors meeting.
Thank you.
Okay, all right, thanks, sure. All right, next item is a request from the Tuxedo Historical Society for loan of a law, of the large village map. All right. Those of you who can can't see it on Zoom but are familiar with the room, we have a beautiful large map as we're facing it on the right side of the room. And Chris Gao, who is on the Executive Board of the Historical Society, I'm sorry?
Not yet.
Oh, well, soon to be, Executive Board Member-elect. Would you please tell us what the purpose of this request is for? The nature of the request and how long you wish to to hold on to the map and and how we can, how we, how we can guarantee its return?
The old Chase Bank is now the new headquarters of the Tuxedo Historical Society, and we'll be having regular opening hours for on Sundays from one till four P M. So you can come and make deposits and withdrawals, but of an historical nature. If you want an ATM as well in the railway station opposite. Their current exhibition will go on through the end of February, but we were hoping to start an exhibition in the beginning of March at Maps of Tuxedo Park. And so it would be a fascinating exhibition, seeing your house on the maps from the various stages and history, seeing whether your house used to be a chicken coop or a doghouse. And this map here from nineteen thirty nine would be integral, an important part of that exhibition. So we would request if you would loan it to us for a maximum period of eight months. And we will take care of all the state transportation into our building and the return of it before the six month period. And I would, I would rehang some of the artwork you have in the back here to to cover up the the blank wall.
Okay, and you say it's the loan is for how long?
It'd be maximum of six months, I don't think the exhibition will last that long.
And we checked the back of the map and it's, even though it's large and heavy, it's it's removable from the wall without damaging the wall.
It's only been installed once, and I I haven't seen it since we put it back on the wall in ninety eight.
Okay, so I'm going to make the motion and then we may have some questions for you in the discussion among the board. Be resolved that the Board of Trustees approve loaning the Tuxedo Historical Society the large map situated in the Village Hall Meeting Room for a period not to exceed six months. Do I have a second on that motion? Any second? Second by trustee Sher, discuss. Oh, was it trustee Turner, I'm sorry. Discussion or questions for Mr. Gao by the board on this issue?
I I think our attorney would need to review insurances and, you know, a contract, right? I mean, we can't vote on it tonight, so I would think we would have to, Jared could probably figure out what we would need from the Historical Society to review.
Yeah, and we're glad to work with them and and get those and get that information from them. I mean, if there's going to be public coming into the to review this, and there's also the risk that there could be damage to whatever's being, you know, you know, put out for review, viewing, we want to have adequate assurances that no damage either to the people coming or to the exhibit.
Okay, so Jared, I I'm not at all familiar with loaning art from a person to a museum or between museums. Does that generally involve a written contract with all sorts of stipulations?
Yeah, I actually have some experience here.
Okay. Go ahead, trustee Turner.
So generally, it's insured. And the person who's borrowing it pays for the insurance, generally the museum would. In that instance, the biggest concern is actually the transit to and from. And I think we just need to make sure that that is done in a cautious way.
It is a big map. Can't go in the, can't go on top of somebody's car. Can't carry it on the roof, all right. Jared, with the board's permission, we'll give this assignment to Jared and and have him look into what needs to be deter, written out in an agreement between the village and the Historical Society. How does the board feel about that?
I'm glad to assist.
Yeah, I I is the board in favor of?
Yeah, yes, I I am.
Okay, Deputy Mayor?
Yes.
Yes, trustee Turner?
Yes.
Okay, trustee Brooke?
Yes.
Okay, all right, so Jared, if you'd work on that and report back to us, you want it in March, right? So we'd have a meeting, we have a meeting in February, we'll we'll see if we can work out the details in February. All right, Jared, thank you. Your your audio was terrible to the tonight.
Oh, can can you hear me now?
That's much better, much better.
So I'm I'm sorry, I just have a question, do we didn't actually vote on that resolution?
We're we're not going to vote on it, we're going to.
Okay.
Jared will look into it and get back to us in February.
Thank you.
All right, we're getting to the end, folks. Purchase of laptop for mayor, so I inherited the office and with that there was a mayoral laptop that Mayor McFadden had been using and then it was given to me and I've always kept it in the mayor's office. And about two or three weeks ago, the screen died. And we asked New Windsor I T, who's our I T support, what we should do, is it repairable? I use that laptop, it's the only access I have to the internet other than my phone here in the village. And I use it to go through my mail, print out documents and do what mayors have to do in their offices. So I, New Windsor I T said, it's shot. We recommend that you buy a state approved, in quotes, laptop, which is a Dell Latitude, add a couple of programs to it. And so I'm requesting now that the Board of Trustees approve the laptop, it's not mine, it's village property. I don't take it home, it remains in the mayor's office. And when I'm done with my job, it'll go, it'll be inherited by the next mayor. So I'll make the motion, be it resolved, the Board of Trustees approve purchasing a new laptop for the mayor at a cost of seven forty nine dash thirty two, point thirty two, with MS Office on it for additional three hundred and twenty two dollars and twenty cents. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by the Deputy Mayor, any discussion on this purchase?
I have one question.
Yep.
How old was the old laptop?
Yeah, the old laptop was was, I think it was twenty twenty, it wasn't that old. But it's 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 now a paperweight.
Yeah.
Not the screen, it's a paperweight.
Yeah.
We'll, 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 we'll put it on in Auctions International, let's see if somebody wants to buy it.
Oh, just make, just make, if we're going to do that, obviously, just make sure we wipe it.
We wipe it, of course, we're gonna, of course, we'll wipe it, we'll wipe it. Oh, we have, well, Chi Yan, could you wait until for a couple of moments before public comment? The 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 public doesn't really have the right to comment on this issue of laptop.
I wasn't going to comment on that, I was raising my hand for the public comment.
Okay, all right, then we will get back to you and allow you to give public comment. All right. So all in favor of purchasing the new laptop, please say aye.
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 Aye, okay, that was, that was unanimous, thank you all, and allow me to work here in Village Hall rather than at home. The next item is was requested by trustee Brooke to put on the agenda. It is the final item under new business, trustee Brooke, discussion of changing paddle court lighting, the floor is yours, sir.
I'll be, I'll be pretty brief, the paddle lighting is not being able to put in and that's meant that anybody who wants to play paddle on the facility can't really play after four o'clock because nightfall is four thirty. You know, work has gone before the Board of Zoning Appeals, the Planning Board. Nobody seems to be willing to make a decision. My my proposal is that if we don't make a decision, we talk about changing some laws. There are a series of laws that we can change, which I talked to council about and council can review them for us at at some point. You know, but the answer is the club was asked to provide a lighting review, they did the lighting review and it was found to be inadequate because the lighting around the court not, I wanted it lighting from the club's property, that's a useless expense of little value. There was some objection to the fence site, the fence site is regulation fence site. That may have the fence audience, fence rules, so. So I I believe that if the if the board, if the local boards can't make a decision, it moved to the trustees to change those laws to facilitate lighting and the lighting should be in 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 sync with the existing lighting laws, which means you can't have lights on after ten o'clock at night. And the law, the the noise issue was handled by the club as well. And it was found that a car driving by created more noise than paddle light, which was a long way away. So my belief is that in executive session, at some point in here, we look at what rule changes have to be made if the local boards can't make the right decision.
Thank you, trustee Brooke. In light of the fact that we happen to have the the chairman of the B Z A, Jake Lindsay, present, and he would be speaking in response to trustee Brooke, not as a member of the public, but in his role as Chair of the B Z A. I'll I'll offer you the floor for some brief remarks. Chairman Lindsay, if you want to. Chairman Lindsay, if you wanna take, undertake that offer.
You know, the reality here is that the club came before the B Z A in September. The, the, the B Z A asked the club to provide, you know, lighting, whether the lighting met local code, do something in regard to a sound study. We also discussed the fact of potentially putting the light on a temporary basis so they could see that. But this was back in December, in, in September. The club has not been back before us since then, they have not provided any of that information with the exception to the, to the board, with the exception of a partial light study. So to say that we're not capable of making the decision is an incorrect statement. The club is the one who's delaying this, not the, the B Z A.
Well, you know, I think we all have issues. I am concerned that in a small community, everything is like kidney stones, small issues, small opening, enormous amounts of body discomfort. And therefore, what I wanna do is change those laws, if they have to be changed. And my understanding is that the club had provided to you a lighting study. That lighting study was part of the, the original design. And your comment was you wanted light study not around the court, but around the club property.
The, that, that is part of the village code. And, and you could ask John in regard to that because John was the one who requested that. And what we said at that point in time in my discussions with, with Dave Christensen said, well, if you don't wanna do this, let's then put the light on so we could then see what the, what the light is at the edge, at the edge of the property lot. But the club hasn't moved forward to do that yet.
Okay.
So I can't, we can't make a decision if they don't provide us the information.
Okay, I will, I will speak to Dave and tell him that the ball is in his court according to you. I assume he will.
I think that if you spoke to Dave, he would say the exact same thing. He knows the ball's in his court.
Yeah, I, I, rather than have a back and forth, you wanna address this in executive session?
Yeah, we'll have it in executive session, but the answer is if you feel there are laws that have to be changed, that you can't touch them, right, kick it up to the trustees and we can make that decision.
It, you know, right now, we haven't been able to vote on it either way, okay? But if you wanna look at the law, be my guest.
I, I looked.
I mean, right now, right now, it's very difficult.
Listen to you, what I've said to you is if a law is blocking something that should be simple to do, tell us what the law is and we as trustees can consider changing that law because you wanna follow the rule, we'll change the rule, okay?
Well, that's up to you.
Well, I've asked you.
I mean, you guys, the, the law is the law.
I've asked you to submit what law needs to be changed and we can change that or do you handle it with a rule change, okay? I'm trying to make this efficient.
Well, we'll discuss the issue of changing the law in executive session with advice of counsel.
I can't, I can't recommend to change the law, that's.
I didn't, I didn't ask you to change it. I asked you, if you're looking at it, to give us the law that we have to address. And we will address it. Very simple.
Okay, well, it's in, it's in, it's in the code. I mean, it's very specific.
So you're saying you're not gonna submit anything for us to consider, we should make the decision ourselves. We'll do it in executive session, thank you.
Well, we won't change the law in executive session, but we'll, we'll get advice of counsel in executive session. All right, okay, let's, let's move on. Audit of claims. Elizabeth?
Yes, bills in the amount of one hundred sixteen thousand sixty-six dollars and fifty-one cents were processed for the general fund. Three thousand six hundred thirty-one dollars fifty cents for the professional fees fund. Thirty thousand nine hundred eighty-seven dollars ninety-six cents for the sewer fund and ninety-seven thousand eight hundred ninety-nine dollars for the water fund.
And any bu, any budget transfers?
No budget transfers.
No budget transfers, good to hear, okay. Now, closing comments. Chu Yan, you, you had your hand up, so please feel free to state your closing comments.
Yes, Mayor, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, I've got, I think, three comments. First, a really happy one. I want to thank you, Mayor, for convening the capital planning committee and I also, also want to thank the committee members for your excellent work in identifying, prioritizing and proposing financing for much needed infrastructure work. So thank you. Second comment is that I guess the board will defer your discussion on the cell tower until February.
That is correct.
In that case, we will resubmit the petition, which has been signed by now, as of tonight, two hundred and four people. About twenty something more than the first time we submitted it to you on the twen, on the twenty-third of October. And we'll do so sometime next week so that you have a fuller picture of the public opinion. The third comment is really a question. I think Professor Hayes has left the conversation. But I think he mentioned, he asked at the last Board of Trustees meeting about the stormwater drain mapping study that has been discussed for some years and never materialized. So I'm wondering where we are at in relation to that much needed project in relation to other infrastructure type work. It's not infrastructure, but it's a very important study of the watershed management infrastructure. And I, I know Josh knows a great deal more than I do about this and I'd like, I'd just like to know where we are at with that.
Josh, do you have a response?
Yeah, so maybe Michelle and I can tag team this. Immediately after that last board meeting, Chu Yan, the capital planning capital planning committee got together along with John Ledwith to really dig in and understand the situation. I, I don't have a report for you right now, but I can safely say that we've probably spent amongst ourselves probably five to six hours over the last month tackling this very specific issue with the goal of developing a plan. Joanne Hanson, I think from John Ledwith sent around a report to maybe all the trustees, but definitely to the, the planning committee with a, a report by our engineers. Weston and Sampson, it's a hundred and seventy-four page report that identifies you know, the, it provides basically a map of the sewage system. And so the, the short answer, Chu Yan, is I wasn't prepared to discuss this tonight, but we are taking it very seriously and working towards what ultimately is a, you know, a, a long-term problem that we need to address.
Yeah, I would, yeah, I would add just that in conversations, as Josh was saying, as well as with Jim Hayes again, that, you know, the first step will be a map of, you know, the storm drains.
Which, which, and again, we, 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 I, we, like I just said, we have, we actually have a good sense of where those maps are. John Ledwith has a, I think, a very practical suggestion about how to tackle the issue. We know where there are specific issues with the, the system. And John, I think we had discussed, you know, getting a top three list and just start to tackle this, you know, one project at a time. It just, it requires focus, Chu Yan, and at least for now, we have focus. I'm hopeful we'll put in a system that maintains that focus.
Okay, that's great to know because I remember that this project was first discussed around about two thousand twenty, twenty-one. And a very small budget of twenty thousand dollars, which I don't think is enough, was put aside for that. And I understand from Professor Hayes that, you know, we don't know for sure, but potentially a lot of the pollution that goes into Tuxedo Lake comes from the, you know, the, the stormwater drains that goes directly into the water. And that really exacerbates our problem with bill for even the anoxic water rising. But anyway, thank you very much.
No, no, we, we are, and, and it's easy to conflate some of these issues, but, you know, definitely with the, the stormwater system, I think we have we're, we're, we're developing a plan. We don't have a final plan, but we're, we're in the process of, of figuring it out.
Great, thank you.
Any other public comment before we go into executive session? Many members of the public? Okay, seeing. Yeah, oh, any trustee comments, true. Yeah, you're right. Any trustees wanna add anything? Thanks, Deputy Mayor.
The only thing I would like to add is, you know, just to emphasize that every member of the board is seriously considering options for the cell service and you know, and it's disappointing if people feel they're not being heard, that they're being ignored or that we are advocating for one specific proposal, and I don't see that as the truth. I, I, I hope people don't feel that way, but apparently they do.
Well, I think in fairness, they just, they don't see a lot of the work that goes on in the background, so. But I agree with you. I, I think Michelle, hopefully we've demonstrated to the public, we're all very open-minded. I think we all have the same objective here, which is to provide better cell service and the question is how do we do that without dividing the community and, and hurting, you know, individual families within the park, so.
Absolutely.
Okay, any other trustee comments?
Yeah, so wow, I lost my train of thought just there. Maybe if anyone else has anything before I, I go, otherwise we can just move on.
Trustee Turner?
No, I, I think the two trustees covered it before, so.
Trustee Brooke?
Oh, let's go.
Okay, all right, then we'll, I'll move on to the resolution, be resolved at the Board of Trustees. Yeah, I wanna talk about it. Be, be resolved that the Board of Trustees leave the public meeting and enter executive session at, looks like nine twenty-four P M to discuss, to receive advice of counsel on various issues and to discuss possible contract negotiations. Do I have a second? Second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, all right.
I think that was. Hold on a second, more. Is Math, yeah, that's it, we're in.
Okay, all right, we, we've returned from executive session and we do have one resolution. At the public portion of the meeting, at Jeff Voss's report, he indicated that he really needs a new truck and he obtained a proposal from a state, a state-approved sales company, Robert Green Truck Division, for a total amount of sixty-five thousand three hundred seventy-seven dollars and ninety-five cents, which includes a two hundred dollar delivery fee from Rock Hill, New York and no tax as a municipality. So, and he also indicated that he usually obtains financing for his vehicles that last five-year term. He's already set aside money for the first year for a new vehicle. So I would move that we approve the purchase of the nine, two thousand twenty-five Chevrolet twenty-five hundred double cab for use by the D P W at the price of sixty-five thousand three hundred seventy-seven dollars and ninety-five cents through Robert Green Truck Division in Rock Hill, New York. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by trustee Turner. All in favor? Aye, aye, okay. Final, that's unanimous, final motion. I'm sorry?
I thought Josh was gonna say something. Were you gonna say something?
Okay. Be resolved that the Board of Trustees adjourn the public meeting at ten oh five P M. Do I have a second? Trustee Brooke, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, thanks.
One question, Jared. Against Zoom, needing stuff in person, is there any way to get around that so people can zoom into the meeting and still fulfill New York state law?
I'm sorry, I missed the beginning of the question, trustee Brooke.
You cannot, we cannot hold a meeting unless there are three people here in person.
That's right.
Right, is that written stone or?
Yes, you have, you have to have a, a quorum physically present and then, and then the two can participate remotely.
So if somebody's got a broken leg, they can't participate because they zoom?
Unfortunately, no.
So local municipality can't change that?
No, that's, that's state law.
Okay.
The only other way, other way to do it is to, you know, adjourn until you have physical presence of.
You can't conduct any business without three people in the room. Would everybody give John their availability for the, the dates for the griev, the grievance date?
The first one in January?
No, well, there's, we, we agreed on the twenty-fourth. We need to know what the grievance day is.
And Jared, I might have to have a conversation with you to check on grievance dates. I believe the third Tuesday in February is the last date that we could have it.
That's traditionally the date it's held. I'm gonna check to see whether it can be held, you know, how far before and how far if, at all after.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, thanks, everybody.